Monday, September 21st. This is City Hall Commission meeting at 5:30. So I have a call to order, please. Rule call, please.
Smith.
Here.
Luke.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Robish.
President.
Mayor Garantin.
Here.
Join me, your pleasure, please, just please.
My pleasure, please, is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City Commission adjourns it to convene to the Board of Adjustment for the following public hearing. 2.1 Dale Fordham project address 1409 First Street Southwest is requested to construct a pole shed using corrugated street metal roofing and siding which would expose fasteners. For code only allows standing seam architectural steel on residential structures in area zone R2, one family residential district. Planning Commissioner? Commissioner, I guess not Commissioner. Planning Director.
Thank you, Mayor.
Barry, please say.
We have looked at this, there's, while we have had in the past that there have been some variance requests in this particular neighborhood, and they have been turned down. We have looked at this. We recently approved, this body recently approved a variance in a different neighborhood for the same type of structure. So what we did as a result of that is we went back and looked at why we're having so many variance requests for those particular areas for this particular item. And we found that there are multiple variances being granted in one neighborhood but not in others. So what we did is we approached the Planning Commission with a recommendation that we look at these transitional neighborhoods that are in the outskirts of town that's kind of surround the more denser populated parts of the community. And we've recommended certain areas be looked at to allow this type of building to happen. They've agreed to do that. I think there's an appetite there to allow some of this kind of siding and roofing in those transitional areas that are in the outskirts of town. And while they have not made a final decision yet, we anticipate meeting with them next month with the hope of bringing forth a recommendation to change the ordinance, and that would lessen the amount of variances for this dial of request. With that in mind, although my comments prior to the Planning Commission reflected, you know, the fact that the city has denied other variances in this area, I would retract that, and I would recommend approval, given the fact that the Planning Commission appears that they are ready to discuss changing that ordinance. And by the way, for the record, the hearing examiner also recommended approval, and we had, for the record, we had a number of calls, and Dale has a petition that shows that he has a lot of support in his own neighborhood to allow this to happen. We only had one call that had any concerns, and that was more about drainage than it was anything to do with the structure itself that Dale's talking about putting up. So with that, I'd recommend approval for that.
I see that Dale is here, Dale Fordham. Would you please have your comments?
I don't, but I know that, you know, what you guys got in the packet was black and white. I did kill a couple of trees, so I do want to hand out my packet, and I can answer questions that you guys might have on it. And this does show the colored pictures. Went through a lot of ink, too. And like Barry said, I mean, we figured there's a, we went, I pulled back the first month, and this is something since we bought the property that I've been talking back and forth with Chris. And just wanted to put something out that we can put the large motorhome that we have and the other vehicles in. It is, in my area, though, there are several of these types of buildings, and this is not a galvanized building by any means. I mean, it's just a colored steel that is factory painted. So, and everybody, I had about a hundred of the pictures and the layout of where it's going to be on the lot, that we went around to all the property owners of the lots. And that's indicated in green are the ones that were home that we did talk to. And both my wife and I, you know, we do understand that looks really make a difference in there, and we work hard at our house to try and keep the looks up and stuff, but not one person had any concerns with, matter of fact, from Third Street all the way down to Market Street, from Lincoln all the way over to Rushmore, everybody knew our property. Everybody pretty much sees us out there working on it. So not one person had a concern. And I can answer any questions, or I can give you the one hour speech.
Any questions for Dale? From the Commission?
I guess I...
Go ahead, Christian.
Thank you, Mayor. This is more for Mr. Cranston, I guess. So when you say you're going to take this case by case, or you're going to go by area by area?
This, we would, we would look at adding this allowance to the ordinance by area. For example, we would include South Frontier Drive and North Frontier Drive, where there's been a half a dozen of these granted. We would include the area that would be north of Third Street but west of Lincoln in that area because, and then also east of Redding Lake but north of Highway 14. And potentially, the area north of the railroad tracks along Kansas Avenue and east of there. That is one of the things that the Planning Commission wants to look at yet. They want to go back and review each particular neighborhood and see if that's appropriate in those neighborhoods. I believe it is. The only other place I think we looked at, and Tucker and I have been passing, you know, language on a potential change to the ordinance back and forth, it would be in the other, the mobile home districts, because there are already metal buildings in those districts. So that, those would be the areas that I would consider transitional areas. They go from either ag or large lot to a lesser populated zone, and then more into the more populated centers of the city. And so I believe there's room out there in those transitional neighborhoods to allow for this. And it is decorative steel. I mean, Dale's right, he's, you know, we've seen these over and over. That's what's getting put up in frontier acres over there in that area. So I believe that they, they're warranted product and could be used.
I understand all that, and I wanted that clarification, and I agree with that, just because, I mean, in this neighborhood, there's probably more buildings like this, as many buildings like this as there are sighted buildings or whatever. It's not like it is in a residential, it's a residential, I understand that, but it's right next to commercial business, all that stuff. And so that would be different than someone wanting to build close to Kansas, close to Wisconsin, whatever, whatever.
There are, you know, there are districts in town where this kind of facility would not be appropriate, like in the historical district, and some of the more densely populated, you know, areas that are south of, you know, 10th and 12th Street, down in those residential areas and things. So there are, there are appropriate uses, but there are some areas of town where I would, I would agree that they're, they're not really inappropriate kind style of building.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
You know, I just got one thing. It's, because we were ready to go this spring earlier, and we worked on this, and we were going to come before you guys in the spring, and this all broke. So the urgency now is, so just in August 26th, I got my quote, and that quote really tells you in there that it has gone up $6,000. And it's not the steel, it's the wood that's driving that price up. And he's, he's saying that, you know, if we can get it ordered, that's what I don't, you know, I know they're working on the variance, and that takes time, but that's, are the changes ordinance, but that's why I would like to move forward. I do have a contractor that can start working on it, that has worked with Chris before. So we would be able to get that up and stuff before we, is what the plans were.
Any more? I'll move approval of the variance. Okay. Christian. The second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Robish, a second. Any more discussion?
I just, if I may, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Couple of questions. Again, probably directed more toward Mr. Cranston, but so through the hearing, you and the building inspector, according to the comments, you're both staying with the current ordinance in place or the restrictions in place, but after that meeting, you, you apparently have said, you know, we're crafting this other ordinance, so you'd be in favor of it.
Yes.
How, how is that reflected with Chris? Is he on the same page, or is he still...
Well, I can't speak for him. He, he believes that if you have an ordinance, you know, that is the standard you should be working from, rather than grant an exception unless there is a, again, this goes back to some previous things. If there is a reason why the property cannot be used, then that would, that would justify a variance if the owner cannot use his own property because of some unique circumstance that is not, you know, of his own making. However, just to say that it, the cost is going up or something like that, that is not necessarily what, would not necessarily meet the threshold of a dire circumstance that would require the exemption to the law.
Well, and...
So I believe in this case, because we're considering changing that law, I believe it would be warranted. I do believe that the Planning Commission has an appetite to change it, although, again, they have not made a final decision.
It probably would deserve a little deeper dive as to, you know, we went through an exercise probably five years ago regarding steel siding, steel roofing, exposed fasteners, and maybe that should be revisited, because we seem to get a lot on this request, you know, and we've held pretty firm as far as maintaining a standard on that, especially on housing.
And this is only what we're proposing, and what we're talking about at the Planning Commission level, is not for primary residence structures. This is merely for accessory buildings, which is what his variance request is for.
And I understand that, Barry, but I think the public would say, what's the difference? And so that maybe is something that they have to consider, too, is what's the difference whether, I mean, if it, if it's the look that's a concern, what's the difference whether it's on ancillary building or on the towns? That's the point that I'm trying to make.
Sure. And again, you know, we are going to continue to work on this in the Planning Commission, and it'll be on the agenda for next month for continuing discussion and possibly, you know, action. But at this point, you know, I can't say they're going to make a decision that would be in the, you know, trying to recommend a change, but I do believe they are looking at this fairly strongly. There was some interest on, from several, several of those members to support a change because of the number of variances that were seen. They have more question about, maybe the issue isn't, isn't the townspeople, you know, maybe the constituents aren't the issue, maybe, maybe the governance is the issue.
Right. And I think those materials continue to improve.
Right.
So it's probably worth another look.
Very much so.
Sorry, Dale.
That's okay.
That's not your problem.
We're having a conversation here that's bigger than what before. But I would say, I was going to ask some of the same questions of Commissioner Smith there, that I wasn't part of it when you guys went through the program before, but it does seem to me like, for instance, on one of the ones that we did on Frontier, he was replacing a structure that had traditional siding that was in really rough shape with a new building with exposed, and I think probably everyone would look at it and say, the new building is much nicer than what he replaced, even though the previous building was within code and the new one was not. So I would encourage you, you know, I would say these districts that you're looking at would matter, but I would encourage you to ask the Planning Commission to look just in general at this issue again, because it does seem like there's, this seems to be coming up quite a bit.
I would also compliment Dale on the look of this building. I've seen similar buildings, and, you know, if it can maintain that look for 20 or 30 years, then that's a pretty, pretty nice improvement to the community. That's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Time for a rule call vote, and our financial director, Carrie.
Smith.
Hi.
Luke.
Hi.
Craig.
Hi.
Robish. Mayor Garantin.
Hi.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Dale. All right. The Board of Adjustment adjourns, and to reconvene is the City Commission. Moving on, public forum. Please comment. Public comments may be directed, sent to a live meeting broadcast in the city's YouTube channel. The link is listed on the city website at www.huronsd.com/citygovernment. In order to use the YouTube chat feature, please create an account with your YouTube and Gmail, or use your existing accounts. Please state your name, address. For the record, public forum is limited to a maximum of three men per person. And I don't believe there's anybody here for the public forum tonight, but as I stated, you can call in, and we have a person, Janet, is waiting to answer the phone calls. If you have any questions or comments, you have to tell us your address and your name, and she will give me a heads up here, and we'll try to answer your question the best we can. So with that, we'll move on. All right? Thank you. Agenda approval. We have two changes to the agenda. We'd like to add to 10.2, which is a termination notice of a sampling building in our call center. That's a contract we need to terminate, we're going to terminate tonight. On 10.3, it's Airport Fuel Farm, and a request from the capital asset may, so we'll get to those two. Those would be the amended ones, so. Consent agenda. Matters appearing on the consent agenda.
I'd move to approve the agenda as an amendment.
All right. Second, someone?
Second.
Second, Mr. Good. Okay. Rule call, please.
Smith.
Hi.
Luke.
Hi.
Craig.
Hi.
Robish.
Hi.
Mayor Garantin.
Hi. Now we'll go to the consent agenda. Thank you for slowing me down there. Consent agenda, much matters appearing in the consent agenda, I expect to be non-controversial and will be acted upon by the Commission at one time without discussion, unless a member of the Commission requests to have to, in order to address any given item. Items removed, and consent agenda will be discussed at the beginning of the formal items. 6.1 Minutes of September 14th, Commission meeting. 6.2 Fuel codes for city departments. 6.3 Alcohol beverage consumption in public. Katharine Huntley for Sweet 16 birthday party on October 10th, 2020, at the Campus Center Blackburn Hall. 6.4 Special liquor license filed by Top Florida Events for retirement party here in Campus Center on September 28th. 6.5 E-911 contract renewals with Giraud County and Han County. 6.6 Personnel items. Regular status for Christopher Harp. Solid Waste Maintenance One for completion of probationary period. Number two, regular status for Tanner Durnaker, police officer for completion of probationary period. 6.7 Payment of the bills. Any other motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent.
Second, please.
Second.
Commissioner Robish. Rule call votes, please.
Smith.
Hi.
Luke.
Hi.
Craig.
Hi.
Robish.
Hi.
Okay, moving on, the bidding code items. Consider approval of Vantage Park sanitary sewer design agreement, and we have a city engineer here tonight to explain all we need to know about this project. Welcome, Brad.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the, this is a design agreement from a consultant for sanitary sewer installation that we're looking at to take down Fourth Street and then Custer Ave up to Vantage Business Park out there, so it'll serve future development. And then it'll also connect to Northwestern Energy's power plant, and they've committed to annex into city limits with the sewer improvements there, which will add significantly to our tax revenue from that area, so which helps fund this project. This agreement, this design agreement here from Infrastructure Design Group out of Sioux Falls, they, they're going to basically provide the sewer design that will include, it also includes some of the construction assistance, too, so like there'd be questions during construction, and then also shop drive review, but the city itself, so we're going to do the construction admin. The city is doing, we already completed the survey out there, and the wetland delineation has begun. We had to get that going, or else we weren't going to be able to make this fast timeline. This construction project needs to be completed by the end of next year. So with that fast timeline, it's also why the city's not looking at doing the design, because with our other workload and our other normal projects of water main installation and curb and gutter improvements and the other projects we do, we just couldn't fit this in that, that fast of a timeline. So from Infrastructure Design Group, it's an hourly not to exceed amount of $79,441 for the sanitary sewer design, which is a very reasonable amount, because the project is estimated around 1.7 million of construction costs, so that's less than 5% of the construction cost, and includes some construction assistance. One other little item that it does include is includes some time for some city training. Since the city did the survey on this and developed a base map, as they go through the design process and work with AutoCap, AutoCap Civil 3D, they'll meet with the city several times and show us the process of how they put that design together and give us some of those standards, so that, like, the Phase Two portion of this, because we're only going to go up to the, to the limit of Northwestern Energy at this time. Once we figure out what kind of development occurs at Vantage Park, we'll have to do a Phase Two portion that goes out to that business. I would, you know, want to keep that in-house and do that ourselves, and that's, so some of that training will assist that, you know, but it's also part of the design, so it kind of incorporates well with this contract. So with that, it's basically $79,441 for the design. Project needs to be designed and bid early this spring and constructed by the end of next year, 2021, and we recommend approval of the contract.
Any questions? Yes.
Would, you, we had already budgeted for this project in some of our previous work, so is this in addition to what we budgeted, or is this fall under what we had already done, put in for the overall budget?
This is incorporated into some of our budget that we had for it already. Some of this is going to have to be paid, because the design is going to occur, like, start now, and budget doesn't begin until the first of the year, right? So we'll have to pay some reserves to pay for some of that as we go through, because they'll have some billings, I'm sure, by, before the, the end of the year.
So we're potentially pulling some of this ahead, but this is something that, in essence, we've already discussed in our budgeting, that this is part of what we need to do.
Correct. And you had your first reading of the budget. Tonight's the second reading, I believe, right?
Next week.
Next week is the second reading, but the fast pace, we're just trying to get in there, so we want to make sure we got through the first reading, but...
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Brad, can you tell us a little more about the contract company that we're, we're dealing with?
Infrastructure Design Group?
Yes.
Yes. They, they've been doing some work for us here. They're, they're a company, they might be 20 employees, I think, somewhere around there, but they, they actually did the work for us on Third Street, Phase Two portion of it, which is actually going to be bid and built next year. We're doing the construction admin on that, but that's actually in design and going to be bid here, too. So they've done, been doing work for us. They're also, we reach out to them when we run into various questions, because, you know, we have engineering here, but you have to reach out to other engineering resources sometimes to get some questions answered, or, you know, like, when we run into issues with construction, they've been very helpful with us, with, for us through all of that. So they're, they're a very good company, very grateful.
Where are they out of?
They're out of Sioux Falls. Actually, they have an office in Sioux Falls, they have an office in Mitchell.
That's all.
That's all. Okay. Any other questions for Brad?
Mayor, move approval of the agreement.
Second.
Second. Rule call vote, please.
Smith.
Hi.
Luke.
Hi.
Craig.
Hi.
Robish.
All right.
Mayor Garantin.
Hi. Thank you. Ordinance and resolutions, 9.1, reading, second reading of ordinance 9-245-1877, building permit required, and adoption of ICC 2018 version codes. Tucker, our city attorney, would you talk about that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, so this is the second reading of the ordinance number 2215-18-77, and that's regarding the exceptions to the building permit requirements that we've added. And it also contains the adoption of the new updated ICC 2018 version codes.
Any other motion?
Move to approve the second reading of ordinance 2215-1877.
Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Brad. Any other discussion on that? See and none. Can we have a rule call vote, please?
Smith.
Hi.
Luke.
Hi.
Craig.
Hi.
Robish.
All right.
Mayor Garantin.
Hi. Okay, thank you. 9.2 Resolution number 2020-13, setting building permit fees for state services, and city planner, Terry Cranston.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This merely allows us to, there's no change to the actual permit fees. This is just moving it into resolution form, so it's easier to be more functional and more efficient to make changes to.
Any other motion?
Move to approve. Mr. Robish.
Second.
Commissioner Smith, second. Discussion.
Commissioner Robish. I just have a little bit of a comment on our building permits. Again, our building permit is not to know everybody's business, okay? Our building permit is, the reasons for building permits are, they can be twofold, or they can be maybe more than twofold, but twofold for sure is to make sure that, just because we want to do something, doesn't necessarily mean it's always the right thing to do. Looks or legality, and that's really the sole, that's the biggest purpose for having a building permit, to make sure things are put in the right place and done at the right, the right way. Not, not to say, you can't do this, you shouldn't do this, you know, that's not what it's for. And, believe me, we can't budget the city on building permits, so that's, it's not the money issue. It's to make sure that it's done right, especially things that are put in the right place. How many times do we run into fences? How many times do we run into sidewalks? Well, that's not where I want it to be. Well, that's not where I wanted to put it. Well, I understand that, but that's merely what it's all about. I just want people to understand that because we get a lot of feedback saying, it's my property, I'm paying the taxes on my property, I can do what I need to do on my property. Well, kind of, yes. But you need to make sure that it's okay with everybody around you because there's a lot of people around you, so that's what it's really all about. So, thanks to Mr. Cranston.
Any other questions? Approve the discussion, roll call vote, please.
Smith.
Hi.
Luke.
Hi.
Ray.
Hi.
Robish.
Hi.
Mary Harrington.
Hi. Okay, 10.1, Paula, do you wanna talk on that one?
Sure.
Okay.
Partner, I had a request for the capital asset committee for a purchase of 47494, which is a steel alley, and I had to turn our attachment to go with it. They do have money within their capital asset budget from this year that they did not spend. Capital assets recommend an approval of that purchase, so we ask for your approval.
Move approval, second.
Approve, Commissioner Good, second, like Commissioner Smith, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Smith.
Hi.
Luke.
Hi.
Ray.
Hi.
Robish.
Hi.
Okay, 10.2, termination notice, sampling center and call center. Tucker, our city attorney, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So just to recall, last week before the commission approval was granted to authorize the mayor to enter into the contract for the COVID-19 call center and sampling site with Car Chiropractic. Last Friday, we, Barry and I, we worked on some language, we drafted a letter for a notice to terminate that contract, the 10-day termination notice. So because the commission approved the contract, we're bringing this termination notice before the commission to ratify the termination contract. So that at the end of the month, the city's obligations under the contract will be terminated and cease.
Okay. Any motion? Move to approve the termination of the contract. Commissioner Robish, motion? The second?
Second.
Commissioner Smith, for a second. Any more discussion? Perhaps we just need to clarify it for the public and for myself, but, so Car Chiropractic is gonna be responsible for all the testing going forward and the city is just out of the picture at this point, is that correct?
Yes.
So testing will continue, but we've got a new vehicle to do it, is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, if I might. The, part of the reason for us having to terminate it individually because the contract, we weren't legally set up as a partnership, if you will, or a joint venture, so we had to, if we were going to end the city's support, then we had to do that individually, and so that's one of the reasons we were doing that. And then if we, in, in the termination letter, you would see is, that it does say that we will reengage if there's another significant spike. So it's, it's not that we're washing our hands of it by any means, but it does, this does give us the ability to move away from the emergency operations piece of it. As it's now going forward, it's, it's more of an ongoing and, and sustainment type of operation that the healthcare community can handle.
Mr. Mayor, this, this was a recommendation from the task force as well?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And the part of the reasoning was that the amount of testing and need for the call center has, has decreased significantly since it was terminated.
Well, basically what happened was in mid-March, when we started our task force, there was no sampling and no testing facilities at all. We did the sampling, we didn't do the test, we never did testing, just did sampling. And as time went on, moved on, more and more claims got their testing equipment, more and more claims got involved with sampling. We have, we also now have testing and sampling at one of our nursing homes. They can do it right on-site. So a lot of things changed and the hospital, they've got their own site, hospitals got their own testing facility and our claims got their testing facilities. We didn't have that mid-March, so we had to do something. It was an emergency situation. That mission's done with, we're done with that mission. Our medical community is stepping up now and they're gonna take over. If it gets to be like Barry said, it gets to be a little bit more than that, and I don't think that's gonna happen because we have excellent claims and excellent hospital and they're ready to go. If we need to, we'll open it back up and away we go. Because guess what? We've done it for six months, we know what we're doing. We're not gonna throw stuff away, we're not gonna throw what proven ability we have away, it'll be there, we can do it. So who's gonna be responsible for that? It'll be the medical community as of September, as of October 1st.
Since this is coming from the task force, the county also wants to step away, the city will step away, and I know that several of the members from CAR are a part of the task force, so this is not anything controversial or, you know, everybody's on board with, this is the right direction to go for the community, right?
Right. It, it is up to the county on whether that, not they terminate, they're, they're part of that, but this is, this has been an ongoing discussion for two weeks now with, with the task force.
Any other discussion on that? Roll call vote, please.
Smith.
Hi.
Luke.
Hi.
Ray.
Hi.
Robish.
Hi.
Mary Harrington.
Hi. Let's go to 10.3. Paula and I will, I will read what we have in front of us. Okay. This is, this is on our, our airport fuel farm and we've had discussion with the capital outlets and we approved $15,000 for it, but since that time, things have changed. And I'm just gonna read a little bit what our airport manager has sent to us requesting another $15,000 coming from the capital asset committee, so I wanted to bring you up to date on a little bit what we've done. We were budgeted to relocate our fuel farm this year due to issues with deliveries and other problems with current location. The place we're going to locate has been issued due to the fact that we may get our air service back, we need to create a parking problem that the fuel farm will be right in the middle of. The location, the location that we now need to be created and required for longer access and exit approaches in an area that is soft because of the previous wet years. All in all, we need a well-developed access approach and path to set the tanks on, which in one estimate would run an additional $27,000. I have another estimate that would get down to $15,000 and I would probably fund a part of that from different parts of my budget to put, to be safe, but I would rather return money than to be short, so I would like to request a full $15,000 and I would return it whenever, whatever I did not use. In both cases, we're using materials I already, already have, so we're not purchasing any materials. I cannot risk taking from the project money since there are several steps that need to be completed once the concrete work for the containing loading area is done, that takes part in the majority of our already budgeted funds. Recommendation from the capital asset fund is to fund the, fund the airport field project with an initial $15,000 from the second penny reserves. That was from a statement from our, our airport manager and, and it's also a recommendation from the capital asset committee to approve that, so. Any motion on that?
Move to approve the request.
Commissioner Smith, the second, please.
I'm the second.
Second, Commissioner Brett. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Smith.
Hi.
Luke.
Hi.
Ray.
Hi.
Robish.
Hi.
Mary Harrington. Hi. With that, we have finished our commission meeting for tonight. Janet, we did not have any phone calls, all right? I'm sorry, getting asked that for. So as of that, we're done, thank you.